We're all live, we're good to go. You see Rhonda up on the screen, but she's actually sitting in the boardroom here because we have a meeting after this meeting. Just so you know. And first, I'm going to call the meeting to order and first we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you. Okay, disclosure of particular interest, you can do it now or at any point in time through the meeting. And we'll move on to confirmation of the agenda. And we have no alterations at this end. We are going to have a discussion under new business with regards to vaccination sites. Just so you're aware, and we'll also have a discussion on potential in-person meetings. So I have a motion here to confirm the agenda of March 4th, 2021. Moved by Counselor Kellum, second by Counselor Hurlick, no Counselor Wilheim. I have plexiglass, it's actually, I'll start. Oh, we'll take those off for a minute, that's better. Okay, those in favor of that motion, that's carried. Perfect, we'll move on to consent agenda. We have items 5.1 to 5.9 in the council minutes of February 18th, 2021. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? Don't see anything, anybody want to make that motion that we received consent agenda items 5.1 to 5.9 and approve the February 18th, 2021 council meeting minutes? Counselor Wilheim, Counselor Hurlick. Those in favor? Carried. Thank you, we'll move on, public meetings, hearings and delegations, we don't really have any. So we're going to go to the C A O 7.1. Modernization and efficiency intake.
Thank you very much, and through the warden, this is a report that speaks to both provincial modernization and efficiency grants. So all the money comes from the province, the modernization grant, there are two streams, one is for review projects and the others for implementation, and this is a joint report with a number of the staff, I'll just give a quick overview. And if there's questions on paramedics, Mike is able to speak to this. If it's got something to do with your organization and administrative process review, I can speak to that as well. But the review projects, we have one under paramedic services and that's a joint application with Oxford and Elgin counties to review paramedic deployment. The goal is to find efficiencies and cost savings. Oxford is going to be the lead, they're the ones that are going to submit the application, but they have asked if the county would like to be part of this and we're very excited to be part of this, we think there's a lot of benefit from reviewing with Oxford and Elgin counties our operations to see where we could find efficiencies and cost savings. The organization and administrative process efficiency review, that has two components, there's a review of the organization structure. There'd be a SWOT analysis of current structure, how to best design the organization around strategy and process as opposed to individuals. And to improve our effectiveness and efficiency of how the county delivers its services. We would identify improvement opportunities through mapping of key internal processes. And we want to look at modernizing processes to achieve efficiencies for our services. Staff will also receive training in that exercise, so the process mapping can continue after the project is complete. Implementation projects under that stream, we have paramedic services. We have a live data connection and dashboard CAD link implementation. Under the, I should mention, the review projects are 100% funded by the provincial government, the implementation stream is a combination of, sorry, funding. So on that one, it'd be 40,000 from the county, 74 from the province. The mobile integrated health, telehealth, virtual care model, that's about $8,000 for the county and 15,000 from the province. Public Works has a, they previously did a report and a review under stream one of modernization money that was available for winter maintenance, winter modernization maintenance processes. John will speak to that and he's actually provided a detailed report for those implementation measures because they come from a bigger project with multiple recommendations. And he's looking for funding for equipment and programming for common platform for weather monitoring, patrolling and automated vehicle locations. And the efficiency grant, council will recall that we did have some money from the province and we are looking to do an IT GIS review, Steve can speak to that. And it's to develop a master plan for IT GIS comprehensive review with the user group that we've established and started meeting with. And those are our key stakeholder involvement, so that's a review that's going to look at both IT, which is, has not been done for the county in the past. And certainly GIS, the last time I believe we looked at GIS, there was a review in 2006. So lots have changed, lots of things have changed. Certainly the IT environment has changed and what the county and other municipalities use GIS for. And that was identified as a key, key item in the service delivery review that we did a year ago with between the county and the four lower tiers, so we're very excited about that. That would, that's about $90,000, $97,000, I believe, is in that account that will take care of both of those components to that review. So it is a larger one. We expect for the modernization money that we would hear from the province in May and we would have a report back to council on the review stream. Excuse me, in November. So it will all be done this year. And we're very excited about participating both in the joint projects and in the other projects that we believe will benefit the county organization a great deal. So the report is before you, if you have any questions.
Okay, questions from council? Counselor Wilheim?
With this, how much staff time is going to be involved in this and is that going to be a problem with, with so much staff time?
Through the warden, so the, the implementation projects certainly, some of those would already be in the work plan, but there is funding available for it. So I will let Mike speak to paramedic services and John certainly will, will speak to his. The organization review and the paramedic services review between Oxford, Elgin County and Perth. Those are to hire a third-party consultant, yes, there would be staff time included in that. I can't give you an hour, a number of hours. But certainly with, as long as we structure the RFP properly, the staff would be in a supporting role providing that information. The organization and administrative process efficiency review, we have good data in terms of what we pulled for the previous service delivery review, we've also done a workload analysis that would be very beneficial to dovetail into that particular process. So yes, all of these projects come with staff time. And we have, you know, particularly paramedic services, I've had that discussion with the chief there on the IT side. You know, when we're looking at consulting assistance there, you can get IT consulting. So we will have to go through our processes and our workload and priorities and we certainly will have to make it work with the resources that we have or we would come back to council if we find that we have any pressures.
Other questions? No questions, no comments? Okay. I'm just going to speak on behalf of Mike for a second. I know Mike is really excited about this paramedic one.
Yes.
This isn't just about deployment, but this is about procurement, this is about everything.
Yes.
So there could be some huge cost savings if we can get this set up right.
Right.
And two, the three entities are already managed by Medavi.
That's right.
And so it makes it easier, and it was Oxford that was actually the one that was interested in doing it.
Yes. And through the warden, all these projects are about looking at our, our financial resources that we have, the staffing that we have. You know, taking the money once, spending it right and being smart about it.
So if there's no more questions, I have a motion that council received the report entitled Efficiency and Modernization Intake Two Projects. And that the IT GIS review be funded from provincial efficiency funds. And that staff take the necessary action to participate in the provincial modernization funding program intake two. Moved by Counselor Eggers, second by Counselor Casenberg. Last chance for comments or questions. Not see any of those in favor? Carried, perfect. Okay, we're going to move on to the digital service squad. And I'm assuming that we'll have Justin come on for that. You're not supposed to assume anything. Justin there?
Yep.
Justin, how you doing?
Yes, good morning.
Good, we're ready for your report there.
Great, thank you, good morning, warden and members of county council. Through the warden, this report serves as an update on our Perth County Digital Service Squad program. So as you may remember, back in, we funded with this funding in September and thanks to some quick turnaround with our lower tiers, BIAs and business associations, we're able to successfully apply for a Perth County's own digital service squad team member who started working with the county and was onboarded in October. The digital service squad program were, the services were extremely well utilized across the county with strong demand from businesses in all four lower tier municipalities. The report quantifies and outlines the various services that the Perth County Digital Service Squad is able to provide over the course of the contract position. And was curried up until the agenda publication last week, so there are some additional businesses that have been helped even in the, the weeks since this went public. So at the time of the publication, there were over 60 businesses that had access to the service squad services. Many of those, I should note, access services more than once and access more than one service. And we're anticipating probably at least 10 more businesses between report publication and the end of the contract next week. The total number of businesses accessing the service was likely, you know, we, we did obviously feel some impact from the restrictions that were put in place during COVID and over the course of the DSS contract, so despite the lockdown period and periods where businesses were unable to really drop in and, and do that face-to-face introduction. We did see a really strong demand for this program. Thanks in part to our, you know, direct outreach, our word of mouth, some business postcards that we sent directly to businesses across Perth County, presentations at active meetings and BIAs, et cetera, so really strong demand, you really really pleased with the uptake we had over the short period of time that we had this program in place. As you'll note from the table in the report, many businesses were able to access more than one service, so as you can see, you know, 30 businesses utilized the Google My Business service. 20 businesses were assisted with e-commerce. 20 businesses received social media assistance. Only three businesses were able to receive the 360-degree photos for their website, that obviously was impacted by inability to visit businesses. 30 businesses were assisted with website development, 60 businesses had curated resources shared. 50 businesses received digital audits. And 20 businesses received assistance with the digital transformation grant that was offered through Digital Main Street Ontario. So in regards to digital transformation grant, this staff were able to assist 20 businesses with the application. Through that process, we were able to have 12 businesses successfully complete the application. And six businesses were able to access over $15,000 of support for digital transformation projects. Whether that be an improved or new website, web functionality, setting up e-commerce channels or automating social media, so really really strong number of businesses in Perth County were able to access additional funds through Digital Main Street Ontario through our, our digital service squad team member. So with the digital service squad contract ending next week, economic development tourism staff have put together a continuity plan, continue to offer a selection of the DSS services on an ongoing basis while still receiving support from Digital Main Street Ontario, so staff will continue to offer the digital audits, Google My Business, 360-degree photography, curated resources sharing from the Digital Main Street library and referrals to DMS, other DMS programs through DMS Ontario, including the Shop Here program, which is a, an online store set up for free, free of charge. So we are confident that we're going to be able to continue to support businesses in digital transformation as even as the contract comes to an end and are hopeful that the province and the feds do see the value in this and do offer a re-up on, on this program. So with that, I will put this for, the report for your approval and welcome any questions.
Thanks, Justin, questions for Justin? Comments? Not seeing any, Justin, good report. Do you maybe just want to mention that joint press release that went out last night when you're on the line there?
Sure, absolutely, yes, so through the warden, we did broaden the loop with, with our partners in Stratford and St. Mary's and as well through our own conversations with accommodation providers across Perth County that they were very much feeling like they were slipping through the cracks. In particular in regards to the small business relief grant, the $10,000 to $20,000 grant that many businesses across many sectors were accessing, but accommodations were cut out of, so we did pull together a quick press release that is going out later on today, I'll, I'll circulate that to council as well. Asking our local representatives and our federal provincial representatives to expand the eligibility to support this sector that is both faced challenges and also, you know, in light of the announcements about the reduced festival this year is going to continue to be challenged this year, so that release will go out later today and, and is forwarded to all the the relevant ministries in the provincial government.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, so there's no questions for Justin. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the Perth County Digital Service Squad Program Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Ait. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you, thanks, Justin. So we'll move on to corporate services. And the first one up is the Perth Archives Report for Shared Services. And we'll get Betty Jo up there shortly.
Thank you, warden, good morning, council. This morning's report from Stratford Perth Archives is an update on how archives operated during 2020 in accordance with our pandemic in-person service plan. Essentially, as the report points out, in-person visitors dropped in 2020 as one would expect and service by email and phone increased. Researchers who did visit in person found service by appointment, which was a big change and improvement as well. It took less time to do their research once they arrived because they and staff had invested some time before they came in. So the records that they wished to use when they visited us were sitting right there waiting for them rather than waiting for staff to have a chat with them about what they might want to use and physically bring them out from the collections room. We have begun scheduling appointments for in-person researchers once again, post-provincial shutdown. So that began the week of February the 22nd, operating with the same safety protocols that we had in place for August to December last year. And just another update, since the report was written in January and February this year, 2021, archive staff responded by phone or email to 95 requests for information or photos or whatever. And so that's 95 contacts and sometimes, you know, it can take a few minutes to respond to one of those and sometimes it can take a couple of days. Just for some context, I'll point out that those 95 requests are just over double the number of such requests that were made during January and February of 2020 before the pandemic began to affect services here. So that is the operating update for MSSC and happy to take any questions that you might have about that at this time, thank you.
Thanks, Betty Jo, questions for Betty Jo? Nope, not seeing any, so I have a motion here, Perth County Council receives the MSSC report for Stratford Perth Archives. Report for information, the council approves the report for submission to the MSSC meeting of March the 18th, 2021. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Eggers. Those in favor? It's carried. And next we'll move on to P O A and we'll get Linda on the screen here, thanks, Betty Jo.
Yeah, I just, I just emailed Eric and Steve.
Oh, Linda. Oh, I see your name, I don't see your face and she's still muted. There. There we go. We're good, we're ready to go.
That's wonderful, good morning, warden, good morning, members of council. My report provides an update on activities for the Provincial Offenses Court Services office to the end of 2020. It includes operational impacts of COVID-19. Court service staff worked with IT to set up audio courts starting in July and video courts using the Zoom platform starting January 26, 2021. P O A court services have facilitated three Zoom courts as of the writing of this report, staff are adapting to the new challenges. The regional senior justice of the peace says we can very cautiously and slowly start scheduling some Zoom trials, but he will not authorize any in-person appearances in the foreseeable future. And as of the writing of this report, the order under section 85 of the Provincial Offenses Act extending certain timelines expired on February 26th. There's been no additional extension of timelines ordered. Our office is working with the regional senior justice of the peace to commence convictions for failing to respond and commencing the enforcement process. On February 16th, we completed our court verification walkthrough as arranged by the MAG Recovery Secretariat and there were no areas of concern. It was actually a very complimentary report. And on to my numbers, last year there's a 28% reduction from the average number of charges filed from previous years and fines collected is a 19% reduction. The distribution of revenue has been calculated accordance with where those offenses occurred. And I was able to provide you with approximate $250,000, $250,000 that will be distributed with the municipal partners. So the numbers are lower. It could have been worse. I, that is my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Linda? Not seeing any, thanks Linda, it's interesting to know how much the charges were down. But the revenue wasn't down as much as the percent of charges, so I'm assuming people are getting higher ticket charges.
Yeah, and we've been nagging.
Okey-dokey, and a motion, the Perth County Council receives the P O A Court Services 2020 Year End Report for MSSC and Operational Update Report for Information. And that Perth County Council approves the report for submission to the MSSC meeting on March the 18th, 2021. Moved by Counselor Hurlick and Counselor Casenberg seconds that. Last chance for questions? Those in favor? It's carried, thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the forestry report. From Marvin Smith, and you're going to do that, Tyler?
I will, so through the warden, thank you. The report before council is prepared by Marvin Smith for the forestry inspector, there was 12 inspections, three requests by landowners and nine as responses of NOIs. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to pass them on to Marvin.
Questions? Don't see any, I, I got a quick question, so if, I had a guy phone me the other day and he wants to cut a bunch of dead ash down in his bush. And it's a significant number. And I said, just before you do that, you might want to have Mr. Smith look at that. Is there a fee for that?
No.
I didn't think there was, I told him not, and I thought it was right, but I just wanted to double check that, but it's getting close to the edge of the bush where all the dead ash artists, you maybe might want to have that inspected. So, okay, that answers that question. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the January 2021 Forestry Inspector's Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Kellum, second by Counselor Wilheim, I believe that is. Those in favor? That's carried. And we'll move on to Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council. And is Corey going to do that?
Yes.
Oh, there's Corey, we're ready for you, Corey.
Thank you, warden, council, the report in front of you is the 2020 Statement for Renumeration based on the Municipal Act. Section 284 requires the statement to be provided to council as well as to the public related to their remuneration from the previous year. So if you go down to the attachment on page three of the report, that is the statement itself. You can notice that professional development is a lot lower this year in relation to COVID. I believe there was one, I think it was Roma was the only thing that people got to at the beginning of 2020. And that is identified, you can see that identified in this report as well. If there's any questions from council related to this report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Not seeing any. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the 2020 Statement of Renumeration and Expenses for Council and Appointed Committee Report for Information, moved by Counselor Hurlick, second by Counselor Eggers, those in favor? Carried. And next we have the tax policy, tax rate and borrowing. And I believe that will be Mr. Corey again.
Warden, that is correct, so there is a kind of a multi-purpose report here. It includes our borrowing bylaw as well as our tax policy and tax rates for 2021. As you see in the reports, county staff is continuing to lobby and move forward with current value assessment. And to, to bring us up to more current values than where we're currently sitting at. What 2021 tax policy is based on is 2016 impact information or provincial assessment data. You also see within the report as well as the details or some details related to the optional subclass for small business. To highlight within there, I've contacted our local municipalities in relation to this subclass and many are deferring them for this year in absence of the full legislation from the province or, or regulation from the provincial government. Within the report, you'll notice that Elgin County, Oxford County, Wellington County and Essex County are all deferring this subclass into 2022 year. To highlight as well, the only highlight is that the tax policy is that we're looking at to reduce the multi-residential, current multi-res to 1% basically what, or sorry, 1, basically what our new multi-res gets if they build within Perth County. So it, it's driving in line with that, that, that ratio itself. So if you look at another slide in the table within the report, it breaks down what, based on this policy, what burden each class pays for. Counselor Ait indicated that West Perth looked at this, treasurer looked at this, and, and I said that that's basically what Perth County looks like. So if you look at the table on, with related to weighted CVA, this tax policy itself provides 60% of the burden is provided through residential with about 29% being farmland. And the remainder of the percentage being the rest of the classes. Basically, the commercial and industrial making up 10% of that. So if you can continue on throughout this, the tax rates are there. Tax rate increase from 2020 is a 2.79% increase. Tax rate increase from 2020 is a 2.79% increase from 2020 to 2021 with a decrease in the multi-res because of the reduction in the ratio. And then the final part is the tax borrowing bylaw, or sorry, the borrowing bylaw itself. So throughout the year, if we dip within our, before we receive our quarterly levies, we can go to the bank and get a loan. So we're looking at that loan to be about 8.7 million for, for 2021 based on our revenues that we would generate throughout that. So if there's any questions with respect to this report, I'd be happy to answer them as well.
Questions for Corey, Counselor Wright?
Corey, the commercial on-farm business, there's, there's nothing there. But like, so if I'm running a business in my shed, I, I'm taxed as a business. Which one does it come under? Commercial?
So commercial on-farm? So it relates to a farming business that has a, a small component of sale of goods located on their farm. So, so if you had a kind of a little hut that you were selling vegetables and other things to third party, that in itself would be labeled as commercial and, and would be in, under that commercial on-farm business. Essentially, I think this, the only one that is falling under this area is in Perth South, and I believe it's McCullough Farms that actually receives this. So if you looked at that back at the weighted assessment section, there's about 14, 15,000 weighted assessment. That relates to McCullough Farms itself. There has been no other determinations under this on-farm business area within Perth County.
Thanks. Other questions? I got a question for you, Corey. So when we go back to Perth South, we have Stone Town Cheese, which is on the farm. The milk goes from the barn over to the cheese. What do they fall under? Because then all these taxes are exceptionally higher.
Good question. They potentially could be added value or in, in the essence of maybe industrial. I don't know. I have to take a look into the Stone Town Cheese and how it's being assessed through IMPAC. And again, IMPAC assesses these based on the classes. And if there is any appeals with what they are paying, if they don't feel that they're in the right class, they can make an appeal to be, to determine what class they need to be within the overall tax policy. So if it's significantly higher, most likely it's commercial industrial that they're paying on a back component of, of their property taxes.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? I'll just bring this up. So I got an email from the President of the Perth County Federation yesterday. And they were kind of hoping we might reduce the farm tax ratio below 25%. But we didn't have near enough time to get it on the agenda. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Don't everybody speak at once. Anybody interested in seeing that change? You want to leave it where it is? Counselor Wilhelm?
We've had this discussion numerous years, and I think what they're being taxed currently is fair. And to be honest with you, I'd really like to see the government look at some of these industrial farms and tax them appropriately.
Other comments? Everybody's happy to leave it that's 25%? Show of hands? Yeah, it looks like it to me. Just the reason I'm bringing that up is I didn't want them to think that I was avoiding the email. So we've had that discussion. It doesn't look like you want to change, so I guess there's no sense proceeding any further. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the 2021 Tax Policy Tax Rate and Borrowing Report for Information, and that Perth County Council adopts the same tax ratios for 2021 as those of 2020 for all respective classes except multi-residential. And Perth County Council approved the 2021 tax rates and temporary borrowing, and that the respective bylaws be presented for approval. Move by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by. Counselor Eggers. Those in favor? Gary? I'm struggling to see you every once in a while. Corey?
Just to the Perth County Federation of Agriculture, we are continuing to lobby the province on current value assessment. So not essentially the ratio change to fluctuate. We've got a letter, like, the, the issue is, is that residential can't move. It's at one. But if we get current value assessment to a greater value than 2016, the, the shift that is going to be created through urban rural, I think, like I said, I think rural got hit in 2012 versus, and then they received, they seen it over the next, like, sorry, 16, sorry, and they seen it over the next four years. With housing values, which I see to date, I, I think the average in Toronto is sitting around a million per house. The, the, that change, that shift should automatically happen without adjusting any ratios over the next four years. Actually, my take on it should be three years because we missed a year already. So, so by us continuing to lobby to move current value assessment forward, we're still looking at that for the rural communities because, because when we're high in rural, it, it, that whole threshold of the ratio, that 29% that you saw on that table was at 21% back in 2016, and it raised from 21 to 29, just on the farmland class. And that includes any growth that happened over those four years as well. So again, we're not subside, like, we're not going away from what the, the federation is looking at, but I think there's a better tool, basically, on how equitable current value assessment is, is a better tool to look at than just adjusting a ratio.
I got, you got some hands up now. I agree with what you said, Corey. It actually did start in 2012. You were right to start with. But it escalated in 2016. I have Counselor Hurlick, I, and Walter McCounser-McKenzie. Questions? Start with Doug, Counselor Wright.
Do you think the yo-yo effect, so it's going to go back down to 21%, but in four more years, or three, as you state, the farms have gone for that, they're assessed, I believe, at about 1.4 million. They're going to be over $2 million. So the yo-yo effect is going to go the other way. It's going to keep going until one of them has a bust. I don't know if the housing market's going to bust first or the farmland market's going to bust first. But it's always going to be that yo-yo effect. There's no way to get out of that, I'm assuming, where we can, we can maintain a status even. Corey, you're shaking your head no already, so. Because it's always going to be they catch up, then we get ahead as an urban, and then they catch up, then we get ahead.
I think the hot farm market happened previously, and they've taken consideration of that in current value assessment up to 16. I don't think that we've, we've taken in consideration the hot residential market of, from 16 to 2019 or 2020. That I think, yes, you'll see increases in farmland. I just know, I, I believe the increases in residential will exceed farmland increases.
On a percentage basis, you mean? Because really, the housing market has only been hot in 2020, and that won't, won't be in effect, right? You're, you're talking they're assessed at the end of 2019.
Right. I still think it was hot in 2019.
Trying to think.
It was.
I think it was as, as ludicrous as it is, it was in 2020.
And going into 2021. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Counselor Wright, but I, in 2019, it was a hot market, like, residential was hot. There hasn't been any slowdown in residential, though. That's the whole thing.
Counselor McKenzie?
Well, just further to, to what Doug said, you know, I, I, I agree that the housing market was hot previously. But, and I'm assuming that this is, is happening in every municipality, but now you get an asking price on a residential property or a house, and you get the asking price, but you get another, you know, 150,000 or 200,000 on top of it. So we never saw that previously before, you know, 2020 or 2019. So, you know, that, that's compounded the problem, I think, as well. So I, I kind of, I agree with Doug, like, this housing market has gone right through the roof, I think. And I'm sure it's the same in, you know, in North Perth or Perth East as well.
Counselor Hurlick?
No, good. Thanks there, Corey. And that's what I've looked at this for the last couple of years is it's just a game of catch-up, and the residential is going to get revived. Shift, but it'll happen holistically, if you will. No, it's everywhere. The housing market has been very hot, something I really paid attention to, and it's right at the port of it. I mean, the, the housing is in Portobello now is not much different than Stratford. It's wild. And, no, it, it'll play catch-up. It'll do it holistically.
Counselor Kassenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have a question for Corey, but also sort of a prefatory comment. Counselor McKenzie and I will recall presenting to the Minister of Finance at AMO, Saoroma, one of the two, some arguments about this going back two meetings ago. And, and certainly, I continue to believe, and perhaps it's an extreme position, but I continue to believe that property taxes and regressive tax, it should be removed, and that municipal support should be on the income tax. And this is a posture certainly that we, we included in our comments to the Minister of Finance, who pronounced them bold, I believe. Walter, maybe you can nod your head. I think he said that's very bold. So, you know, I think we're all very aware. We're, I'm quite compassionate to the, the issues that farmers are facing. They are seeing, you know, crop returns and, and financial returns in their crops, if they're crop, cash cropping. And, and they're winding up paying a significant amount of that revenue, that, that gross in property taxes right out the door. And, and so the margins are shrinking. This is of concern to especially small farm businesses, and I think that, you know, I, I guess I agree with the general premise that changing that 25% on the dollar against residential is probably not the right approach. But for me, as you've heard, I have a more ambitious agenda with regards to tax reform and the support of municipal government. My question for Corey is, have we seen the first cut for the newest valuation from IMPAC? And, and do we have any sort of first sense of what the shift between residential and farm is looking like in terms of valuation?
Through the Warden, no, we are trying to get that information, but because the province provided the delay, IMPAC cannot release that data until the province says the valuation date will be 2019. The valuation date will be 2020. It's a reason why that letter was sent to the premier, is basically getting them to move forward with current value assessment. So then the financial counterparts at all the municipalities can do that analysis on the shifts of residential farmland and can forecast over the next four years and how that'll impact the overall tax within Perth County.
Other questions?
Just a follow-up, and I guess probably more out of courtesy, and, and maybe this was going to happen, but I think we should respond to the Federation. I think we all got a copy of their email or letter. And I think we should follow up, whether it's Corey or whether it's the Warden that responds and basically outline the discussion that we've had, and certainly the information that Corey had in his, in his report there. You know, just to make sure that they understand that it wasn't just fluffed over and taken lightly, that we, we do appreciate their concerns, and that we're trying to, trying to rectify the situation.
Look, do you have your hand up, Counselor Wright?
I just, I just wanted to follow up with what Todd said about being bold. When, when you presented down at, it'd be Roma, wouldn't it? No, it'd be AMO. So, so as a, as a farmer, I can, are you, I don't know how to say this without people yelling at me. A farmer can claim his taxes on income tax. A small business can claim his, his property tax on income tax. Were you trying to say that a household, like, the housing would be able to claim their, their taxes on their income tax, like the other two sectors? No, okay. You weren't proposing that. You were proposing that all taxes come from income tax.
That was one of four suggestions that we made to the minister in terms of how to rectify the, the growing discrepancy between farm and residential taxes. And, and to highlight that the original policy, which was sort of an affordable Ontario food policy, and, you know, that was sort of the intent of the 25% on the dollar back in the, the 90s, has been abandoned through the, the sort of continuing adjustments around OMPF to municipal governments. And the, the consequences of all of the policy changes have led to rural Ontario bearing a disproportionate responsibility for affordable food.
Okay, anything further? Then we're going to move on. And when you talked about houses prices, they're selling 10 to 35% over list at the present time. Some are listed a little lower because they get more activity. Okay, we're moving to paramedic services. Oh, Corey, you got more? I thought we were done with Corey.
Check them out.
I clicked it, then you put your hand up.
Oh. Sorry, Corey. Apparently, we kicked you off. I didn't see your hand up.
So, sorry, it was just Counselor McKenzie's question regarding the letter. They, are we looking at a specific resolution from council to write a letter to the Federation?
Which is the council? I see Counselor Kassenberg comment.
Yes, I, I would agree with Counselor McKenzie's position that this council should respond in some fashion. However, I think we need to be careful about the wording of this one, and I would appreciate the opportunity to see a draft of this before it's sent to the Federation of Agriculture, just to make sure that we're telling the story that we want told. And I think that the course of this discussion has sort of unfolded parts of that story. And of course, Corey's original report also has useful content that will be supportive in, in preparing that draft.
Making that a motion?
I would.
Seconder, Doug, or Counselor Hurlick, your comment?
I'll second that, and I'll basically echo. We need to have a.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we will have staff prepare a letter. We will circulate it to council. And it'll come back, and then the letter will be sent after we get the feedback from counselors. And we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of that motion, that's carried. Okay, now we're moving to paramedic service. Thank, Corey, because I actually forgot to address the resolution.
No worries.
So we just got to get Mr. Mike.
He's almost there.
And here we are.
Oh, he's moved across the screen. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
We're ready for your report.
Great, thank you. So through the Warden, thanks for this opportunity to bring forward this report. The report that I'm presenting today to council is the M S S C report that will be, and acceptance will be brought forward to M S S C next, well, in two weeks. Just quickly, if I may, with respect to the modernization funding that was discussed earlier. One of the nice things about the two, the projects that we're putting forward is the CAD link, which is that mobile connectivity. That's part of our 2021 business plan already. So this is a way to recuperate some of those costs and maybe also bring in a little bit of assistance to roll out that project as well as with. with um, with respect to the um uh, deployment plan review, we also be um, that's part of our business plan this year as well. So it's well aligned to some of the work that is going on here. Um, the third thing uh with respect to the um telehealth aspect of our mobile integrated health team, that would be an extra project, but it's something that uh certainly would be worth looking at as we continue to grow that uh program. So turning to the um, to our MSSC report. Um, really, this is a year in review. Um, our business plan really outlines our goals and objectives for this year and talks a little bit about um some of our successes uh previous year. So I haven't included that in here, but one of the things, of course, when we create a business report at the end of the year in Q four, um, we don't have all of the residual statistics to the end of the year. So uh, this report here uh provides um how we uh performed throughout the year. And uh, the overarching trends are positive um in in many areas. And um, you know, I highlight and discuss a little bit here, um, provide some examples of what's happening with our community paramedic program. And um, a little bit about our swabbing clinics. We've swabbed over a thousand five hundred um Perth County residents um and been part of that. And um, today, I don't think specifically today, but um over the past few days with the vaccine clinics that have been going on locally or paramedic services have been working with public health and um, are onsite to um support any residents that may have any kind of side effect or allergic reaction or reaction to the vaccines. So we continue to work in those areas in terms of fighting against COVID. And um, I know that we've had an opportunity to go through the port and um see uh the different uh type of headings, call volumes. As one of the um, one of the subjects, we saw relatively no change from last year to this year. And normally we see a sharper change in um call volumes. Um, so I would predict that next year with um, the reset of COVID that we may see a return trend, but time will tell with respect to that. Um, our response time, we continue to achieve all areas that council has set through our our uh, um, response time performance uh plan, and that gets reported to the ministry actually at the end of this month, the twenty twenty results. Um, offload delays I reported earlier in the um, in twenty nineteen that we had seen an increase, but we've actually saw a slight decrease um, in awful delay times over the year. So we're pleased to see that in terms of the work that we're doing with our local hospitals. Um, the reaction time is the time that we receive a call to the time that we go mobile. And we've set that um at two minutes um in particular during COVID with all the extra PPE and we measure that at the ninetieth percentile. So there will be sort of um quicker times and higher times um that would be um in there, but the the ninetieth percentile we're um achieving those standards actually less than one and a half minutes. So that's good news. Um, our patient care audits, we saw a significant decrease during twenty nineteen and then twenty twenty, we've returned back. Uh, we've restored the number of audits that we've completed and the most that we've done in the past five years at over two thousand five hundred chart audits are important part of our quality assurance program. Um, to provide paramedics feedback with um, uh, with respect to the calls that they're responding to. Um, a couple other highlights, uh, we conducted twenty seven internal reviews. So those are times where either a concern has been brought forward with respect to um, patient care or through an audit program, we might find that there was a discrepancy and we've had to um look into that. So we've seen that we've had twenty seven cases last year. Um, with our online learning, we've moved um a lot of our education to online. We did do some in-class last year, but we've had twenty seven modules that we've completed. And um then finally, um, there's a couple of things that are of course in there that you have the opportunity to have a look at. Um, I mentioned about the swabbing. And I think um, you know, I I put a section in here about mobile integrated health and with respect to that, um just some statistics there and some examples uh in the month of January of the types of visits that we've uh, we've been um able to support our patients in our community on. And then finally, um, we just end um talking a bit, a little bit about some of the um, some of the um items that the relationship with many has brought to the table and um that is the report. And there are some links in there to our business plan. If you have further questions about our goals and objectives this year, you can always just click on that and I'll bring you right to those areas. So with that, I am open for any questions. Thank you, Warden.
Questions for Mr. Dare? Not seeing any. Good report. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the municipal shared services committee slash Perth Paramedic Services two thousand and twenty final report for information that Perth County Council approved the municipal shared service committee slash Perth Paramedic Services two thousand and twenty final report for submission to the March, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the municipal shared services committee. Move by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Ike. Those in favor? Thank you. Uh, you get anything else, Mike?
That's all I have for today. Thank you, everyone.
Uh, we chatted yesterday about that grant that went to Middlesex London. And I actually tried finding that last night in the prepress and couldn't find it. So maybe we will make council aware. There was a grant went to Middlesex London, five point some billion dollars for paramedic services. And that was, I'll actually let you explain that, Mike, because we're actually trying to get in on that ourselves.
Sure, yes. Um, through the warden, we um, there's a funding that was made available to the uh, from the province um through the long-term care uh stream and or through the long-term care um ministry uh for community paramedicine, for programs that were already in place and existence. Um, and uh, so uh, this was announced uh back late last year and uh several communities, including Warrly Region and um also, as you had mentioned, Warden, um uh, London had the opportunity to apply for this funding. Um, I had a conversation with uh, the warden last week with respect to this, um, because you know, after um looking at this, even though we weren't invited to the table to apply for it, um, it really comes down to um a technicality. Because we did actually have our community paramedic program um up and running at the, during that same timeframe that um people were invited, or I guess I should say municipalities were invited to apply for the funding. And um, uh, to support large um, uh individuals in the community that are on waitlist for long-term care or to help them stay in their home and um age at home. So it would be a huge benefit to our municipality. And we've, we've advanced a letter to the province to see if we could have some conversations about the fact that we are ready to uh scale up and to continue to support our residents and community in a way that would be uh beneficial. Um, and that would meet the spirit of the program. So if there is um any possibility again for the province to um, you know, have a conversation with respect to that, we'd love to do that because uh we feel that we would be able to help them um, with what their goals and objectives are and in a mutual way would certainly help the residents of our community. And uh, so we'll see if there's any traction in that area. And if there is, that's fantastic. And uh, in the meantime, we'll uh continue uh down the road that we're we're the trails that were blazing and continue to work with our partners um with respect to the mobile integrated health program that we have in place.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, just before you go, we were gonna have a discussion about vaccination. Counselor Wilhelm wanted to bring that up under other business. You're here, you're on the vaccination committee. So Counselor Wilhelm, do you want to raise your thoughts now? Because Mike is with us.
Yeah, I just thought that uh we should discuss with our transportation group that we have our our buses stop at the vaccination centers uh when they're operating. And uh, I think that would be a bonus to our residents and utilize uh transportation that we have in place.
Any other comments with regards to that? I think it's a good idea. Uh, Counselor Ike?
Do do the, I know, I think our vaccination site is going to be at our community center in our arena. I'm, I think that's Walter might shake his head, yes or no? Um, where would, would yours be, Bob? Would yours be at the uh, the hall in St. Paul's? Milburn's will probably be at their arena. Todd, yours will be at the arena. Is that where the buses, our bus stops at the arena now? I'm not sure about each other municipality.
The, if I might, Warden, uh, the one that I'm looking at so far, we haven't got noticed for Perth South, but uh what I see currently is that uh, I believe it's Agriplex in Stratford is where they've uh started. Uh, I believe it's next week. And uh, I don't believe Vigo stops there. And I think that would be a benefit because I know there's uh, some residents uh eighty plus have uh, what times for uh getting their shots.
I think what uh, where'd Mike go on the screen there? Is he going?
Here still.
Oh, there he is. Cat moving around on me. So we'll have staff look into that. You think that would be a good plan? I haven't seen where they've announced any for the lower tiers. It's only Stratford's uh got one at the Agriplex starting and Urin County's got one in
Exeter.
St. Mary's uh has got one. Godrich. Uh, Exeter. We're not gonna end up going to Exeter, but with St. Mary's and Stratford, we could certainly cover off.
Yeah, through through the word and I, you know, the um, the strategy indeed is to bring the clinics into the communities uh where possible, so that it's easier for individuals to um access the uh vaccine clinics. And um, in that spirit, of course, if public transit is um something that we can look at, um, I I don't have the expertise um, of as everyone in this room knows about uh, the uh, you know, the 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 public transit system that I would be able to um um, make a recommendation on that. But certainly, um, I think the spirit is that we want people to be able to get to um the vaccine if they want to um have a vaccine and that's uh super fundamental. So it's something that um I would encourage, you know, for, I would encourage that to be looked into.
Uh, just further to that. So if you're eighty plus, they're basically saying you're only gonna get the Pfizer or the Moderna vaccine, right? They're not recommending the Astra.
AstraZeneca.
AstraZeneca to anyone under sixty-five years of age, correct?
Well, through the warden, um I almost really wanted to defer to public health on this one. I know that I'm hearing the same things through the media reports um in terms of um, the research and the studies. And I think that because research is um consistently, um, real-time research is consistently being incorporated into the um, assessment that uh things may change in the future, but um uh, so I'm not sure where that's gonna land right now, but I think it would be a question for public health that they would be able to um provide more details on that. But I could hear that that might change.
Counselor Hurley?
Oh, it's funny. You mentioned that there uh, Warden, it it's actually changed again today. There's new information again on the app being uh, it's changed again. And as as Mike had there has i- i- it seems to be that they're continuously adjusting keeping in mind on things as they roll out, that seems to be the methodology they're using around vaccinations. With the R M and many, especially in minutes, technologies for keeping them as they go. From what I agree, in public health, probably should.
Yep. And you know, through the warden too, I, it's just as a sidebar, um, the uh, you know, I I do want to give a shout out to public health and um them working with us. And I'm real pleased that our um, for councils awareness that if I haven't mentioned it before, that our uh paramedics have all been made, uh vaccine has been made available to all of our paramedics at this point as mental responders. So um we're real pleased with that. Um, as you all know, we're responding to persons that are COVID positive and um, it's it's been a good thing to be included in that.
Yes, the clinics are ramping up. Ron must make a comment. You got one in Milberton to March the twelfth.
Okay, I knew, I knew Milberton was coming up, but I guess I don't want to be a downer on this, but you take the people to where the needles are. Are you dropping them off or is the bus sitting there waiting? Or you know, there has to be a plan here. And then when that bus gets to its end designation, there's a few hours in between. So what are these people gonna do while they're waiting for that bus to take them back home again?
Well, right.
So I'm just, you know, it it's a great point that to get them there, but I'm just not sure how the logistics are going to work.
Okay, so we'll follow up with staff. I'll have uh, we'll get ahold of Maggie and Justin.
Already sent.
Uh, it's already been, they've already been sent the, to look into it.
Yeah.
But you are right, because you're gonna drop them off. You're not gonna wait twenty minutes.
No.
Or a half hour, because then your route's completely messed up. Okay, we'll, we'll figure out a way to deal with that, hopefully. Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to public works. Tender results. And I believe that is gonna be Mr. Wilson. John, okay. Bill just wrote the report.
Thank you, Warden Hson. Good morning, counsel.
Hey Tyler.
Uh, through, through your worship, our first report is the tender results for the reconstruction of Perth Line fifty-five from Moncton to Road one forty-four and the resurfacing of West Perth's Line fifty-three. Uh, this was a joint tender administered by the county for the recycling and repaving of approximately six point eight kilometers of Perth Line fifty-five. Here also includes some drainage upgrades through the urban cross-section of Moncton uh with North Perth joining in uh and including approximately three hundred square meters of sidewalk removal and replacement. Also included in the tender was eight kilometers of asphalt resurfacing on Line fifty-three for the municipality of West Perth. Uh, we did receive six submissions and the tendered bids are tabled in the report. Low bid is from Brantco Construction at one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Uh, Brantco has subtract, subcontracted rotor mill to perform CIP recycling work. And the county has worked with the both contractors as recently as last year. And staff are pleased with their workmanship in both cases. The county's portion of this bid equates to one million, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and two dollars and ten cents. That excludes HST. We had budgeted one point five, one point five four million. And that included some in-house so work that our staff would be performing such as gravel shouldering. If our estimated quantities are accurate and the AC index remains where we think it will, staff are projecting to be approximately three hundred thousand under budget. And just a note to counsel, West Perth did approve their portion of the contract earlier this week. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? Don't see any. Okay, I have a motion. That Perth County Council receives tender results two thousand twenty-one dash oh three one dash zero zero two Perth Line fifty-five, Line fifty-three reconstruction report for information and that Perth County Council award tender two thousand twenty-one dash oh three one dash zero zero two to Brantco Construction for the tender price of one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and ten cents excluding HST. And that council approved bylaw number three eight one two dash two oh two one. Excuse me, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into and execution of an agreement between the corporation of the County of Perth and Brantco Construction. Move by Counselor Casenberg? Second by Counselor Ike? Any comments or questions? Last chance. Those in favor? It's great. Uh, quite a swing in prices there, John, from top to bottom.
Correct.
Okay, uh, next we're gonna move on to the winter andize, winter and modernization report. And that's John again. Uh, take her away.
Thank you. Through the warden, in November of twenty twenty, council received a presentation from SEMA for the collective modernization of the winter operations. For the collective modernization of the winter operations of the county, the four local municipalities in the town of Saint Mary's. Uh, this report highlights the findings and recommendations from the senior report. And provides what actions are planning on being taken to move forward. Uh, while the county was the lead on the project and I did author the report, this really is a group effort. And the actions provided in the report represent the collective recommendations of the public works leads. Uh, I would like to thank my counterparts for all their work, cooperation and support throughout this project. And the work doesn't stop here. Uh, our focus is or priority is to get our operations on common platforms. And that means development of winter operation plans on a common format, updating our salt management plans. And procuring common equipment and platforms for weather monitoring, patrolling, documentation. And AVL automated vehicle location. This is work we are looking to accomplish in two thousand twenty-one and implement for the next winter season. These items are essential and will aid in looking at the next set of priorities, which are patrolling, snow room. Snow drift remediation, material storage sites and alternative application strategies. As mentioned in a previous report, we are planning on making an application under intake two of the modernization funding. For the procurement of equipment and common platforms for weather monitoring, patrolling and AVL. I know that's a rather brief summary of a lengthy report, but I'd be happy to answer any of council's questions.
Questions for John. Councillor I. John, I see in here that the consultant recommends that we spend another two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on consultants. Rhonda, quit laughing. So i- as everybody knows, once you get something like. Use 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 five guys are the smartest five guys I know on the roads, you and the four lower tiers. And yet we have to spend another quarter of a million dollars. Now, the government's gonna give that money to us supposedly and, but it's still our money. We all know that. So what do you think of that, that every one of these things has a priority one? Eighty thousand dollars to harmonize winter operations. You just said in your report, where'd you go? You moved again. That the used guys work really good together, the five years and and do we need to pay eighty thousand dollars to an outside person? To know what you guys know.
Through through the warden, uh, I think the action items in the report to. Uh, they include, I think it's more than three hundred thousand in additional consulting uh fees for for some of this work. Uh, we're not recommending that um certainly we can accomplish a lot of this in-house. And and part of that is within our in the county's two thousand twenty-one business plan for 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 the public works department. So we're not for one minute suggesting that we go out and and obtain another consultant for any of these things. And I think it's um stated within the report, there are a number of items certainly within. The uh. The integration of the winter operations, those further studies that are rather pricey, we're not recommending moving forward with that. Um, so we just don't see, the group doesn't really see the um. It cost efficiencies uh wi- with those analysis and it does just doesn't uh. Doesn't really show from from what we see that it's worthwhile to move forward on angles, at least not at this point in time. So our actions, our recommendations here are to further collectively. Uh, integrate our operations so that we all are on common platforms and should further integration ever occur in the future. This will certainly set the stage for for that to be a heck of a lot easier.
Other questions? Councillor Wilhelm.
Yes, further to uh councillor I's comments, I think you could uh probably ask any of your snowplow operators. Where the snow drifts across the road, you wouldn't need a consultant to tell you. And probably two hours from each uh plow operator and you know where the should be a snow fence if you want to put up.
Other comments or questions? Councillor Duncan.
Thanks, Warden. Um, I just uh, my my interest is in the the snow drift. Remediation, I guess, so to speak, and and the living snow fence aspect of this, it seems to be kind of glossed over and. And almost passed down to the lower tiers in the report here. I I think this is a. A a great project to to both save the county and the lower tiers money, but also continue on down the the road of of the whole. Carbon capture and and greenhouse gas. Um, reduction plan by by, you know, losing less fossil fuel, plow snow if we could plant some trees to stop the snow from blowing on our roads. So I'd like to see uh myself, I'd like to see a little more investigation into that. And like councillor Wilhelm said, I don't think we need to spend twenty-five thousand dollars for somebody to tell us where the snow drifts are. I think our our staff can easily provide that information and. I I think it's as simple as some outreach to the landowners that own the property adjacent to our to our roads and and. Can uh, we can make this happen. It doesn't take three years to plant trees. So I'd like to see this move forward and uh maybe. More of a priority item than than what the plan listed as. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Uh, the point about planting trees, councillor Duncan, I know in Perth South, we just bumped our budget for planting more trees. Here this week, so. We're also gonna have to look at seriously, looking at some trees that need to be trimmed or come down. So that's why we wanna plant more trees. There's a lot of trees that are liabilities to the municipalities, not just Perth South, but every municipality, including the county. If you get looking really close when you're driving down the road. Okay, I have a motion Perth County Council. Receives a winter modernization project review. Of recommendations, report for information. And Perth County Council directs staff to proceed with action items as identified in this report. Do I have a mover and a seconder? Move by councillor Duncan, second by councillor Wilhelm. Any last chance for comments or questions? Those in favor? It's carried. Perfect. Thank you. Next, uh, council reports the committee on affordable and attainable housing membership changes. And that would be Ms. Rachel.
Great, thank you so much. So through the warden, good morning, council. The report before you outlined a recent vacancy on the committee on affordable housing. Um, and this report is really seeking direction as to if council would like to build a vacancy. You'll know that the recommended action at the top of the report is simply asking council to receive it for information. But if you reference the second page of the report, there are two additional resolutions and staff are seeking direction as to. If option one should be chosen, uh, the recruitment process to fill the citizen member vacancy would move forward. And option two would differ uh filling up vacancy until a later date. So with with that, the report is before you and I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, questions or comments for Rachel? Not everyone's on the committee that's on the screen, but four or five of us are. So I have a motion. I'll read it off and we'll see where it goes. Uh, that Perth County Council receives the committee on affordable housing and attainable housing. Membership changes report for information. And I don't have a second part, so either and the second part of that be the. Are we uh, we would not fill the uh vacated position or will add, we will fill the vac- the vacated position. Councillor I. Uh, my comment is if we're gonna, if if we're gonna fill it, it's better to do it now than a person being eight months behind. When they're only two months behind. So I I if if we're gonna fill it, I would go with the. Uh, number one, option one, because we we don't wanna have to catch a person up in July or August to what we've done. It's or I I don't know the rest of it. I'm on the committee with the other four years. Um, just my opinion to do it sooner than later. Would you prefer to do it or would you rather leave it vacant? I know you said if you wanna do, you wanna do it soon, but you wanna see it filled or not? Councillor Eggers.
I uh think that we do not need anyone else in the committee. There's quite a few of us on there now, so I would move that we do not fill the position.
Okay, so. Uh, councillor Hurley.
Second.
It was mobile for me, so that was a seconder. Okay, so I'm gonna read this off again. That Perth County Council receives the committee on affordable housing and attainable housing, membership changes, report for information. And that the citizen member vacancy on the committee on affordable housing remain vacant. Until a later date or indefinitely. I'm gonna say indefinitely.
Okay.
And you move that, Rhonda, and you're okay with that, councillor Hurley? Okay, any comments or questions? Those in favor? Scared. So that's dealt with. Okay, uh, bylaws. We got a pile of bylaws. We are to go into closed session at ten thirty?
We could go in, yes, we'll have one lawyer available for ten thirty. And um, so we could move.
Okay, so we are actually then going to take a short break. We will reconvene at ten thirty and we'll deal with the. Uh, first item on the closed agenda. So before we take a short break, I would need a motion. That we go into closed session. For to deal with.
We could do the bylaws.
You wanna do the bylaws? Okay, we're gonna do the bylaws first. Uh, okay, I have bylaw number three eight oh eight dash two oh two one, and that is your borrowing bylaw. Be ready first, second and third time and pass this fourth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by councillor Wilhelm, second by councillor Eggers. Those in favor? Scared. Uh, we have bylaw three eight oh nine. Which one's that? That's the requisition by law. Yeah, there we go. Be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this fourth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Move by councillor Casenberg, second by councillor I. Those in favor? Scared. Next bylaw. Three eight ten dash two oh two one, be ready first, second and third time. And finally pass this fourth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. That is your tax ratio bylaw. Move by. Councillor Hurlick, second by councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Scared. And the next one is your tax reduction bylaw, the three eight one one dash two oh two one. Be read a first, second and third time and finally pass this fourth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. Move by. Councillor Egger, seconded by. Councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Scared. And we have bylaw three eight one two dash two oh two one. Be ready first, second and third time and finally pass this fourth day of March two thousand and twenty-one. And that is your tender results by law. Move by councillor Casenberg, seconded by councillor McKenzie. Those in favor? Passed. Perfect, so we got that done. Uh, notice motions? We do have one thing other other business, but I don't wanna do that now. We're gonna take a quick break. So we are gonna stop at that point, but we will have a motion to go into closed session when we reconvene. And that is a matter deal pertaining to legal advice and a matter pertaining to legal advice slash potential litigation. Move by. Councillor Hurlick, second by councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Carried, so when we come back, we will be in closed session and that hopefully will be shortly about ten thirty or shortly thereafter. So we did bypass other business. Uh, we did have it with when we had the meta B, when we had Mike in from paramedics. The other portion I wanted to bring up is I have had a request for potentially going back to in-person meetings. Um, council's thoughts, wishes? Councillor Duncan, you wanna say, or no councillor, tell him, did you wanna say something? I seen your screen go yellow. Okay, no, I see you. No, councillor Wilhelm.
Uh, I think with the the changes by the health unit, that I think uh. Uh, we should have in-person meetings that seem to work very well. The EMS headquarters, the last time we did it. And I would like to see us proceed to the same.
Other co-councillor Casenberg.
I think we should retain the option of having sort of a hybrid meeting, um where those who feel less comfortable with. Being live in the large group have that option and can remain remote.
Oh yeah, we definitely most definitely make it a hybrid councillor Casenberg. Uh, show your hands who would like to have an in-person meal. I got somebody at the bottom. Councillor McDermott.
Oh, no, I was uh just gonna echo uh councillor Wilhelm's uh comments. That uh I would like to have a hybrid uh meeting again, if that's all possible.
Okay, uh, show a hands who would like the hybrid. Okay, so we will investigate what the availability of the EMS boardroom is. And if it's available, the next meeting would be a combination of in-person and hybrid. Does that work? We don't need a motion for that?
Uh, no, I can, I can make.
That's just we'll give a staff direction.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for other business? Councillor Callum.
Yes, through through you, Warden Herson. Um, I've had, uh, you know, being as we have been doing these uh Zoom meetings and that, I've had several comments. Uh, not only that people have um have been watching it live, but have been watching it after. And you know, uh, through you to uh clerk Lori, that we 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 talked about training. I think we need to have some training very soon in the near future about etiquette and speaking and how we speak at council. I know the previous term that I was on that we had some training on this. And I believe that we need some training sooner than later on this. Can you?
We have had that discussion already, councillor Callum, and we're trying to get something sort of lined up.
Yes.
I'm not exactly how close are we?
Um, hopefully, hopefully in the next month, we'll have.
Hopefully in the next month, that may take place.
Yeah.
Good, because I need to answer to six other councillors and uh. Thank you.
Councillor Hurley.
No, I was just gonna chime in there um there before when this conversation started actually. Yeah, at this point, it is very important we keep this accessible internet for the public. It's going over very well. It may not look like many people are watching, but it is going over and people have really start. I I I'm getting people reaching out to me probably once a week. And pay attention to local municipalities, which is a blessing that needed to happen years ago. And it's good to see people engaging. It it's exciting actually for me, so we we just. But we gotta make sure we keep our quality of of audio and video up for the public. Thank you.
Did you have your hand up before councillor McKenzie?
Well, I I get that, uh, just a little bit of concern, but it's kind of already been addressed, I guess. Uh, as to where you were going to meet in person and um I guess my thoughts are that. To meet at EMS is maybe probably one of the worst places that we could meet if there's any type of COVID. Around in in the area, but I don't know where else you would meet unless you went to some local halls or something like that. And that's probably hard to uh to accommodate, so it's kind of the less of two evils, maybe.
Problem when you start moving around is the IT portion of it.
No, I I I agree. I agree.
Any other comments? Councillor Wilhelm.
Uh, not to harp on it, but I I think I've mentioned before that we need to also uh continue on like councillor Hurlick said. But we need to improve our quality of broadcasting and and such like. It's fine for for emergency and and continuing on till we do get better video equipment. But I think uh there's better out there and we can uh provide the residents with a much better. there's better out there and we can, uh, provide the residents with a much better, uh, view of the meeting.
I think, and that's part and parcel when we upgrade the courthouse.
Yeah.
That was all part of, to be in that, but that isn't gonna work right now as with COVID regulations. Just not gonna work. And of course, the other part is your premises discussion. And we're a little hesitant to just spend a bunch of money up in there should you make alternate plans to, as far as an elevator or whatever, so.
So through the warden, that there, there is, um, there will be a report coming, um, to council on the premises. Uh, we are very much interested in the council chambers. I know today there was an announcement released by the province for additional funding for COVID-related, uh, support to municipalities. And the county was fortunate uh, to get a hundred, about $184,000 today, uh, for that. And that'll be out in the media today. But, um, uh, we, uh, do have plans for council chambers. It's just we're, we've paused on those plans. Um, because we want to make sure that we don't start on something in that room and then find that we get direction to put an addition on that side of the building. So I would think within a month, uh, probably a, a special council meeting in April in order to focus on the facilities to get the direction so that we can, um, uh, take care of those other items.
Hey, anything else? Counselor Kazenberg.
Um, just for the county's information, of course, um, about a year and a half ago, North Perth Council approved a project to uh, completely upgrade our, uh, AV system, including video. And so, uh, certainly we, we're happy to have our staff consult with county staff as you're thinking about that, uh, to give tips and ins and outs of things we learned in our project.
That's great.
That's great.
Corey's got his hand up.
Corey.
Um, through you, Warden, uh, just to add, uh, we did put money into an grant, COVID grants, uh, related to courthouse. And it does have audio, uh, visual components related to that council chambers that we have located here at the courthouse. Um, so there is money, uh, set aside for audio. Uh, we haven't officially been told about, uh, uh, anything. Hopefully in this month, we'll find out, uh, whether we've been approved for that. And that i- i- it will be fully funded, uh, um, through that grant program.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Callum.
So further what Mayor Todd said, it's, it's, it's kind of confusing when everyone wants to speak at once. I wonder if we could be a little more trained about the chat function that we have on here. And then it's easier for you, Warden Hason, to, uh, select who speaks in what order, uh, is, is, is required through Robert's rules of, of order.
Yeah, my biggest problem today, I'll be honest with you, Counselor Callum, is we got extra Plexiglas in here. And I'm looking through two or three levels of Plexiglas, and that's why you're seeing me go like this all the time. To get a clearer view of the screen.
Cause I understand. I understand, just trying to make some positive suggestions.
You're right, the, the chat function and the mute section and whatnot, uh, is I've got used to it, but not everybody's had to go in as many meetings as I have either. So, okay, anything else? Not seeing any hands raised. Announcements. Again, I gotta keep deaking down and looking. Uh, okay, nothing there. We have confirmatory bylaw. That bylaw 3813-2021 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held March 4th, 2021 is read a first, second and third time and finally passed March 4th, 2021. Move by. Counselor Willholt, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Scared. And we have the last one, that council meeting be adjourned at 11:23. Move by. Counselor Hurley, seconded by Counselor Callum. Those in favor? Scared. Thank you. Thank you very much.